Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this special work-study session of the White Bear Lake Area School District, Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Arcand.
Here.
Beloit.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Allison, here. Mullen.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and we will move to our first discussion item, D, or, excuse me, B1 grading system for distant learning and for distant learning plan. Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right. Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. I'm gonna first start out by reading a couple of comments that were submitted last week in the, for public comment. I read one of them last week, and these are the other two that were submitted. Veronica Hoffman, 4927 Lake Avenue, White Bear. If the no pass, if the pass no pass system is not negotiable, as I have been told, then the parents and students are going to need clear criteria for what constitutes pass for each teacher. Also, how will cumulative GPA be calculated? I expect it will only be figured on seven semesters instead of eight. More information is needed than was sent in the notice. The lack of information and the way this notice was sent out is completely lacking in professionalism and shows no courtesy to the families that support the district. An apology for the emotional impact this has had on students should be acknowledged. Okay, and then the other submitted by Michael Hoffman, 4927 Lake Avenue. Members of the White Bear Lake School Board, on behalf of the students at both North Campus and South Campus, we would like to express our concerns about the pass no pass grading system. We understand that this decision was not made lightly and that many students will do better under the pass no pass method of grading. However, we feel that the more equitable solution for all students is to let each student choose which grading system will benefit them the most. Students across the district right now recognize the struggles that many of our own peers are facing during this difficult time. Becoming self-motivated while at home for the majority of the day can be a daunting task, and tackling all schoolwork in a different environment with limited resources is challenging. And students have complicated home situations where they might be working or have less time to dedicate to school. Some homes do not have the resources to learn effectively at home. This makes the option for pass no pass necessary, but it should not be forced onto all students. And the high school is going as far as to allow their students to choose whether they will be graded within pass no pass system or the A through F system for each individual class and giving them until May 29th to make their decision. Students of White Bear Lake are asking to be allowed to choose to be graded with either the pass no pass system or the A through F system for all of their classes. White Bear students are asking for a choice that will be less complicated for the district to implement than the choice that a nearby district has already implemented. Allowing students to choose whether they will be graded with the pass no pass system or the A through F system is a decision the district can make in order to help the greatest number of students possible. One large demographic that wants to have the A through F grading system is the students in weighted classes. Under the pass no pass system, no grades will be weighted. This means that AP students will lose the good academic record that they have worked on during third quarter. Furthermore, students who took one or more of the many semester-long AP classes are faced with an additional problem. Students in first semester courses are getting weighted grades for their hard work while students taking the same AP class in the second semester will not get a weighted grade for doing the same work. The time and effort many students have put into their classes this semester will be discredited because of this system. We realize that not everything done in school is reflected in a grade, and our learning is what truly matters, but the school system is set up in a way that values grades highly in education, which makes the pass no pass system very disappointing for many students. As much as learning is the goal of education, grades are the motivation to learn. Many highly motivated students have already begun to lose the drive to work hard in classes that they do not enjoy due to the implementation of the pass no pass grading system. The A through F grading system keeps students motivated to work hard in their classes, whereas the pass no pass system is leading to some to some students losing the motivation to put their effort, best effort into their classes because there is no incentive to do work beyond the bare minimum. This loss of motivation and decline in learning will negatively impact students' academic futures in years to come. Students that need the A through F system to stay motivated that start doing the bare minimum under the pass no pass system will carry over their deficit of motivation and knowledge into the future and find themselves unable to successfully readjust to an A through F grading system once school returns to normal. We respect the intention behind implementing a pass no pass system. During this difficult time, we are simply asking for the choice to be given to students so they can make the best decision for themselves and their unique situations during this pandemic. We encourage you to read through the comments of our petition to get a better understanding of the individual opinions and concerns of various students and parents, and then it includes a link to the, to the petition that was started. Then have a terrific Monday and go Bear. Sincerely, Natalie Andries, Lauren Ecklerly, Maya Gale, Jacob Grand, Tim Hannigan, Michael Hoffman, Adam Beloit, Victoria Lane, Ernest Mattson, Arthur Perrin, Gavin Rogers, Anna Ryan, Ellis Agnes, Claire Schneider, and Aiden Schaeffler.
Dr. Kazmercheck, before you, before you move on, please excuse me. I know that we've received several emails as board. Will those be all entered into the minutes as record?
That is, I wouldn't, I don't know that that's a requirement. I mean, we'd have to, I'd have to check on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I can certainly check on that.
I'd appreciate it if you do so, because I think that in the past, that as we, if the board, all, all of us receive an email, that it goes into the record as a, as a piece, a position of the minute. So if you could just clarify that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
And then I will leave.
Thanks, Mr. Mullen. All right. So I'm gonna start the meeting off, our next with, I'm just gonna read through something and then I'm gonna turn it over for the next part of the meeting. So on March 15th, 2020, Governor Walz issued an emergency executive order 20-2, which directs schools to close to students and engage in a planning period from March 18th until March 27th. During this closure period, school and district staff were directed to construct a continuity of education plan that would be delivered via distance learning. Governor Walz specifically cast districts to create plans for distance learning that work for our entire community, giving careful consideration for students in a variety of areas, including those families who do not have access to technology, students receiving special education services, multilingual learners, students experiencing homelessness, and students who rely on meals served at school. On March 25th, the governor issued an emergency executive order 20-19, authorizing directing the Commissioner of Education to implement a distance learning period and continue to provide a safe learning environment for Minnesota students. The purpose of the distance learning period is to provide continuity of education during the COVID-19 pandemic while also preserving the health, safety, and lives of Minnesota students, educators, and the broader public. Public school buildings and facilities are closed for this, closed for typical in-school instruction, and all public schools must provide continuous education based on the distance learning plans developed during the closure period. Part of our distance learning plan includes the question of how to assess students during this time. I want to thank board members for your engagement in the dialogue around our grading plan during this period of distance learning. I've had a chance to connect with each of you in the last week, and your thoughtfulness, dedication to researching the topic, and your professionalism makes me proud to serve alongside each and every one of you. I want to thank all the parents, students, and community members who have taken the time to reach out to share how they feel on this topic and to share what they are experiencing during this unprecedented time. We are grateful to the many among you who have advocated thoughtfully and respectfully for both the pass no pass and opt-in letter grade approaches, many of whom have acknowledged how difficult this decision is and who have also shown grace and understanding other points of view. I also wanted to thank our secondary administrators and teachers who have engaged in the development of our grading plan. Administrators and teachers have provided valuable insight into how our distance learning plan is playing out and have shared very eloquently how grading impacts students. At the April 13th board meeting, we presented a no, a pass no pass grading plan, and were tasked by the board to consider a model in which students could opt into a letter grade. You will see what that option looks like in a few minutes, but after looking at the issue again, we still do not believe this is the best course of action. We are encouraged by the fact that the NCAA has released guidance on the issue and will hold students harmless, and post-secondary institutions across the country are discussing the same. Specifically in Minnesota, the Minskew system, private colleges, and the University of Minnesota system are working together and will soon be issuing guidance. While we recognize that a pass no pass grading system for this semester will cause disappointment and frustration for some, we believe this is the right decision. We want to reassure families that student work during this pandemic will be valued, and our expectations remain high, but students will not be penalized for not being able to perform competitively under these circumstances. Our goal is to continue to support our students' learning, build connections with them, and find ways to support them during this distance learning period. Students, please know that we will do everything we can to mitigate the effects of a pass no pass approach to grading. We will make available a letter from me and other administrators that explains the rationale for the decision that you can use as you see fit in the future. We will work with any post-secondary institution of your choosing to help ensure that you are not penalized by this decision. At this time, I would like to turn things over to Dr. Allison Gillespie to provide an overview of the high school grading plan for the distance learning period. She is joined by several other colleagues, including Ange Nelson, principal at North Campus, Don Bosch, principal at South Campus, Miles Webb, cultural liaison, and Tiffany Dietrich, president of the White Bear Lake Area Educators.
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Ms. Carroll and Dr. Kazmercheck. I'm honored to be here again to update you and talk more in depth around what the information we shared last week around grading, but also the work that we've done this week and our final recommendation, and then what would a dual system look like if we were to move to that. So my objectives for today are to share the decision-making process that we use, not only for our original recommendation, but also as we examined what a dual system would look like. Share the information that's been gathered and examined, share a recommendation, and then have time for question and answers. I know this is a lot of information, and typically for us during work-study sessions, questions will come and go, and Chair Mullen's really good at interrupting if I get too fast and pausing for questions, so I'll try to do that along the way, but also have more than enough time at the end. Um, so with that, I will get started. I wanted to honor the high school leadership team that we've worked with to really analyze and take a lot of time looking into this issue and making the best decision that we possibly can for our students and families. Ange Nelson, principal at North Campus, is with me. Don Bosch, principal at South Campus, is here with us as well. Additionally, our associate principals and our district support were integral as we examined all of this. I also have Miles Webb, who's here to represent the cultural liaisons, and Tiffany Dietrich, who's here to answer any questions around the teachers if I don't have the answer or if you'd like to hear different perspectives. So when we looked at our decision-making process, we really, as Dr. Kazmercheck already talked about, had a lot of guidance around implementing a distance learning plan and what that looked like for students. We analyzed deeply the guidance that was provided by the commissioner after Governor Walz issued his executive order. We, we decided and to unite as a 612 system and work together so that we provided a continuity of experience for our families, but also really took this challenge as an opportunity to better align our system for students, families, and our educators. We also examined three different areas that we do for every single decision that we make, and we've made many over the past four weeks that are huge and complicated and impact a lot of our community, and I feel very honored to work in White Bear and appreciate all the feedback that we've received. And I know that all of us care deeply about our students, and they're at the core of these decisions, so they're emotional for all of us, and I'm thankful for the guidance that we have in our system around how we make decisions. So we used our equity commitment in our four-way decision-making protocol, MDE's guidance, and then, of course, our strategic plan. And we always have a commitment to gathering input and reviewing research. I mentioned this last week, and I truly believe there's strength in leadership when you reflect. We're continuously growing as leaders. We don't always get it right in the beginning in terms of our process, but that doesn't mean that we're not committed to always making sure that we incorporate all the feedback that we receive, but that we also are modeling to our students that sometimes you get feedback and you change courses or you learn, and then if you're in a similar situation, you get better at how you communicate and how you partner with your community around that. Our equity commitment asks us to think about our whole, the whole student as we disrupt systemic inequities. And for us, what that means is that we have students in our system that haven't been served to the best of our ability yet, and we're committing to do that. But systemic inequities exist for many different reasons, and we want to make sure that we embrace who all of our students are in, as a whole student, but know that any decision that we make moving forward should not create either new systemic inequities or continue to perpetuate those areas that we still have in our system. I mentioned last week, and I just want to reiterate, our four-way equity decision-making protocol absolutely calls us to think about the students that are, that we're striving to serve better as a system, but it also calls us to think about each and every student in our system and how this is impacting them. Our greatest strength as leaders is the relationship that we have with our students, and I, Ange, Don, our whole team is very, very well-connected to students, understands the pressures that they're under, understands the dreams and hopes that they have, and under no circumstances would we ever want a decision that we make to impact them negatively. Since our last meeting last week, and we sent a communication home to families, letting them know that we were taking in the feedback that we had received thus far, we received additional feedback, which I'll, I'll talk about in a little bit, but it reiterated the breadth of experience that our students have and how difficult this current situation is, and that no one group in our system is having a homogeneous experience. So those students who are high achievers and are traditionally been high achievers, they're not all having the same experience, nor are the students who, who have struggled in our system and we're working to provide access. MDE's guidance that they gave us was to focus on relationships while still providing learning opportunities, and really to use this as an opportunity to strengthen the relationships that we have. The governor and the commissioner have reiterated time and time again that we need to use this opportunity specifically to also strengthen relationships that we have with our Black, Brown, and Indigenous students, and that grading specifically, as we're talking about today, should be used to ensure that students are aware of their progress to nurture their curiosity and intrinsic motivation. And so that is the guidance that we took into our conversations around grading originally and those that we brought forward this week when we met. As much as we did the prior weeks in making our original decision, we took time and intentionally reviewed every piece of information that we have to develop our current recommendation, and then if we were to have a dual system, what would that look like? As I mentioned, we, we have taken in a lot of different information. We have a weekly check-in form that our students complete where they are asked questions about how distance learning is going for them, any struggles or concerns that they're having in terms of their social and emotional health, and really any other issue that emerges. There's a free response space that students can communicate with their, their teachers, with our school system, and our student assistance team reviews that, and it's another way to provide safety nets for our students as we navigate this new learning platform and the challenges before us. We've reached out to colleges and universities, and we did that prior to our original decision and continue this week. Since our last meeting, the UW system issued a blanket statement stating that moved to pass no pass, that students would be held harmless by that. Other schools across the country are still grappling with this, and so information is coming in hourly, like we all know around the situation, but it's also coming in around grading and how that can, whether that will impact our students or not, and it, time and time again, it's coming that people understand the challenge that we're in, and, and right now with COVID-19, and that our students will not be penalized should schools go to pass no pass. We additionally reached out to districts and principals of other schools. We have colleagues and friends, contacts at universities. We've, we've reached out as much as possible to not simply get information that reinforces our own decision, but to make sure that we're, we're truly considering every single aspect, and that we have people who challenge us to think differently. Additionally, our community has reached out and provided different perspectives that we may not share, but we've been able to have some really in-depth conversations, and I believe relationships have been strengthened because of this, and I, I appreciate that, and like I said, and I will say time and time again, we're models for our students and how we navigate conflict that emerges, and grading is an emotional topic in the best of times, and right now is definitely no different. We also reviewed commentary and experts of the field of grading, and specifically their own take on COVID-19 and how grading should be viewed. Some definitely provided support for pass no pass, and a few issued support for A through F grading. And so as we weighed both, all that research and take, took in all of our feedback that we received, we continued to have really deep and rich conversations around what would be the best way to support our students. Community input we had prior in our first conversation, but we have definitely received a lot more this week from students, voicemails, social media posts, student petitions, virtual meetings, teacher phone calls, teacher emails. I really feel blessed to be part of our community, and we've received a ton of feedback. I think it's important to note that some of the public feedback that is asking us to have two different systems, that's a more comfortable position, albeit it's always hard to, especially when your kids feel like you're questioning authority, and how do you do that respectfully? But some of the more private feedback that we've had have been kids that are also part of that group, asking us to consider that pass no pass is needed because of the transition and the difficulties of going to distance learning and/or the situations that COVID-19 has created in their, in their families. Additionally, we continue to research, and we have been researching grading for a significant amount of time around what is, what are, really, what are grades and why do we use them? Are we using them in the ways that are really helping students understand where they are in terms of essential standards? And then how do we help students' learning grow and continue to progress in their learning? The purpose of grades is to measure what a student knows and is able to do in relation to essential standards. This is our definition that we are, we are continuing to reinforce in our system. It is definitely sometimes a different definition than many of us have, because we've experienced grades as either a sorting and ranking system, a reward, extrinsic reward. It's, it really has been, our system for years has created that, and experts in the field would say that those, what we created is actually a barrier to true learning, and that when grades are used to truly measure what a student knows and is able to do in relation to those standards, intrinsic motivation rises, students' willingness to take academic risks increase. And so really, the basis of understanding why would we issue a grade is around measuring those essential standards. Additionally, some of the research right now that's emerging for, for dual systems suggests that students would be hesitant to shift so far away from the norm. So for example, if we have an A through F system, and students can choose between an A through F or a no pass, a pass no pass, students would automatically choose to stick with what they know and, and not be willing to shift to a model that they would need for all these other reasons that we've detailed, simply because it's so different than what they've experienced before. Great, I mentioned this before, that grades should be learning and not a consequence. And then grading during a pandemic could actually be measuring a student's response to stress, the level at which COVID-19 has impacted their families personally or people they know, and then access to resources, time, a learning schedule, just things in their own lives. Our district has done a wonderful job of providing hotspots and, and Chromebooks and doing everything we possibly can, and we continue to be committed around those access questions. But it goes beyond simply providing the tools and, and the situation at home, really supportive families that are going through a lot and trying to navigate things. Learning is, is sometimes comes secondary, or it just has a lot of barriers around it. This is a synopsis of tons of research that's out there. I, I took a list of just some of the big people in this. Doug Reeves, Myron Dweck, Tom Schwimmer, Kathy Vatternot, Rick Warmley, Joe Feldman, they're really, we have analyzed and analyzed, and grading is, is a hot topic in, in education and should be, because it is one of the ways that we, will be way that we show what students are doing in our system and how they're progressing. Ultimately, when it comes down to the emotional conversation or conversations that you have with families, with educators, with leaders such as yourselves, is a philosophical question. Do grades motivate students to learn? Some people will say yes, some people will say no. But ultimately, research says that it, it doesn't, and it gets in the way of true learning. What motivates students to learn is the feedback that they receive. Now, students associate grades with feedback, because that's what we've had in our system, but when you think about true feedback, when a student understands this is where you're really, you know, doing well in relation to this skill, here's something, have you considered differently? They still, they're truly focusing on the learning aspect and not focusing on the letter grade that they would receive. After we talked about all of that in terms of a no pass pass system, we, we talked in depth about why wouldn't we offer a dual system? All of that helped us arrive that a no pass, pass no pass situation is what we want to offer for our students, but do we want to offer a dual option system? We considered this prior to the meeting last week in our original communication, but we considered it an even greater depth this week and had a lot of feedback from our community around it, and took some time to really talk about some of those, those nuances of what people were bringing up as concerns, and would that actually help us to offer a dual option and feel like that was a better recommendation based on the feedback, or do we still feel like our original recommendation is where we would land? In a dual option system, when you, when we either offer letter grades or a pass no pass, grades will be seen as the better option than pass no pass. Students have been conditioned that way. It, grades have been seen as if you work really, really, really hard, you'd get an A, and if you're not willing to work, you maybe get a C or a D. And we know as adults that's simply not that simple, and in fact, harmful to students when that stigma's out there, but students, depending on what group you fall in, really truly believe that at their heart, and so when, to say simply that students who need a pass fail would just choose a pass fail because the option's there, it's, it's not understanding the complexity of all the different things that factor into making decisions when you're a teenager and how you feel like you're, you're, you're seen, and then the systems that have been put in place by, by our system, albeit we look forward to changing that perception, but right now that is reality. Again, some students who could and would want to choose a letter grade, they can't because of this, the impact of COVID-19 and/or distance learning. So we have COVID-19, and the fear that that's placing in really all of us, and then additionally, if they have high-risk family members or family members who've lost their job, or, you know, if someone gets sick in their home and how they have to support if they have younger brothers or sisters. And then we also have a completely different learning platform that we're excited about, and we're working really hard, and our teachers are, are committing and doing some really, really great things, but it's brand new, and some students just say, I work hard, and I worked hard, and I stayed after with my teachers all the time, and now they're not there at that same level, and no matter how hard I work, distance learning is a barrier, and so I won't. It's not a matter of me working hard so I can earn that A, like my friends in my AP classes, or, but I, the distance learning is a barrier for me. Additionally, there's social pressure on students, and when I say social pressure, I don't mean students pressuring each other. I mean this hierarchy in a group of students that's been there over time. It hasn't changed a lot since we've all been in school, and so for students who choose pass no pass, that will be seen again as the lesser option, and ultimately, that they're not as hard of a worker as other students. They will lose status in GPA and class rank, not because of the pass no pass, but because there is a dual system. So some of their friends, who they may have similar class ranks, being competitive prior to the impact of COVID-19, the friends who choose the letter grades and do well will progress forward. This student will stay stagnant because they took an option that they needed to take right now, and that creates a systemic inequity. The other option is that students choosing the letter grade, it's seen as the better option. So I, I'm working harder, I, I am earning an A, you know, just really about that personal motivation and that I'm a better student because I'm willing to work harder. And not that those individual students are saying that in terms of trying to put down friends, it's just how it's viewed in that social structure. Again, they'll be able to raise their GPA and/or class rank, where students who are having impacts of COVID-19 distance learning or any other barriers that exist will not have that option. Moving forward, there would be an inequity in GPA and class rank due to the choice this, this semester. There would always be a question on, you know, would that student have been in a different spot had we had, had COVID-19 not happened? It just creates a lot of questions in our system. Additionally, I know the students who wrote in, I know that a lot of them personally, they're wonderful kids, and I enjoy watching them grow through North Campus. Some of them are still there, and some are heading on to South or over at South. Comparing this semester to last semester is just, there is no comparison there. I understand that the classes are the same, but they're completely different in how they're being offered, and it, it, there's just no way to compare it. And so thinking that a student who was in AP Geography last semester was able to get a weighted GPA, and somehow I'm at a disadvantage this semester because I can't, because we're having equal experiences, they're completely different. And so this semester, what's happening is, is scary, and it's disappointing for our kids, and it's disappointing for us as educators. We wish we could be together. We wish we didn't have to have this conversation around grading and that we were having a different conversation, but it's the reality that we're faced with right now. Then lastly, I had a parent email me this week and really want to talk more in depth around what, why couldn't we do what some other schools are doing where they're either freezing the grade prior to COVID-19 and/or issuing a quarter prior to COVID-19 and/or issuing a quarter three grade and then moving to a pass no pass? So essentially, how does my student get credit for the learning that happened prior to the impact of COVID-19? And really, there's two reasons, and we did consider that, that it makes our situation in White Bear Lake more complicated. One, our spring break fell very early in the semester. So when you think about it, we had six weeks of learning prior to spring break. So if we had quarter three grades at the high school and we are anticipating a quarter grade being a permanent measure of what a student knows and is able to do in relation to standards that are measured quarterly, we would have had still a third of the learning to occur after spring break. However, that wiggle room is different than a wiggle room for an additional 12 weeks of learning. So that is different for us. You know, I know friends in other districts are, were able to issue some sort of permanent grade that was really an accurate measure of what students know and were able to do in, in regards to the learning. And we just didn't have that system. Additionally, the purpose for midterm grades, which are what people often call quarter grades in high school because of their quarter grades in middle school. That midterm grade is a progress report. It's really a snapshot in time of how students are doing in relation to essential standards that are essential semester standards. And so that grade can change quickly. Often it depends if we've had snow days or it, it just really is a measure in time and gives us an awesome opportunity as a system to reach out and support kids who are struggling. But it's not an accurate final measure or permanent measure of students' learning. So why do we still believe that pass no pass, a universal pass no pass is the system to go with? We can assure that no student is disadvantaged by student distance learning, meaning we will push a pause button on GPA and class rank. Students will get a pass no pass, they'll still make progress in those credits towards their graduation credits. But they won't have a lower class rank, a lower GPA than they might have achieved prior to that, prior to distance learning. The struggle for all of us, and we've thought deeply about this, are the kids who are anticipating and feeling really good about the learning that they had done in the first six weeks of the quarter. And even though they're not going to progress as far as they had hoped and we hoped and we, you know, when we left for spring break, we were not anticipating where we are today. That's, that's different than having a system harm you in terms of I have a lower GPA, I, I, there was systemic inequities in what I'm able to do because of the impact of COVID-19, my access to materials and, and any number of things that I've talked about. We keep coming back time and time again as a team that we have no way to measure the impact COVID-19 is having on our students and families. Do they have access to quiet study areas and support at home for academics? Are they caring for ill family members who are either high-risk, which having a high-risk family member is a stressful thing to have and, and when we're not worried about a pandemic and the added stress of worrying about their health and whether they'll contract COVID-19, I know personally is, is a lot. And so caring for younger siblings and assisting in running the household, needing school support for accessing content due to their level of English language intervention support. There's just so many unknowns. And what's impacting students now and what may be impacting them as we progress forward and however this all progresses, we just don't have a way to measure that and we know that it's impacting everyone. And then really, the ultimate is we're able to push a pause on GPA and class rank and have students still get to progress and focus on learning and depth of feedback and critical thinking and engaging with their teachers and relationships and not create systemic inequities by having some move forward with GPA and class rank and others not be able to for whatever reason that they may choose. So this brings me to our recommendation. Our recommendation, as Dr. Kazmicek alluded to and, or mentioned, and so have I, is, is that we remain with the reverse, a universal pass no pass. And what would mean is our, our teachers would work with students and students who demonstrate progress towards an understanding of those essential learnings. And that is focusing on the critically essential learning and how do we go deep into those skills and, and process with students and get critical thinking and all the things that we believe school should be about in a way that doesn't also have the pressure of grades and creating a system of haves and have-nots within our system. No pass would be no evidence of progress towards an understanding of essential learning. We would look at this holistically, not segmented per individual learning opportunity. And so teachers would continuously be asking through formative assessment. And formative assessment is assessment that they give kids again to find out how are they progressing towards, towards those essential learnings? And then how do I as an educator need to adjust my teaching, my individual context with students? How do I really get and hone into the learning around those essential skills? And then feedback and the power of feedback, which our students right now, the students who are nervous about being motivated and feeling like they're losing motivation, they equate feedback to letter grades. And if I'm working towards a B and I almost into an A, that is feedback to me on my learning. I know they're disappointed, I'm disappointed for them. And I, like I said, I, 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 we wish we weren't in this situation. But once they get past the disappointment and they get into the learning and get feedback around their learning, they're learners, that's why they're doing that. And so right now for them, it feels like, nope, it's about the A. It, it isn't. I know them, I know many of them. They, they pursue different opportunities in school because that's who they are. They are constantly pushing us to be better because that's who they are. And so right now, feeling like that A is going to hold them back. It, it just, it is because it's what they've known and being disappointed in, in what they were anticipating. Again, I, I talked about the power of formative feedback or formative assessment. So because we were asked by our community and also we know the board was, was grappling and wanted to have time to process and really think about, we worked through all the information I just processed and created a dual option. What would it look like to have a dual option where students could either choose between no pass and pass or no pass, like, and/or a letter grade? And we still use the same processes that we use before, the same, our equity decision-making protocol. All the research that we use, we used all of that exactly the same, knowing our ultimate charge at the end was to make a dual system for students. And what we came up with is students would either choose between pass, no pass, or A, B, C, pass, no pass. Essentially, you see the pass and no pass, the parameters around that are the same. And then students would look at what, teachers would look at the skills students are demonstrating. And for a C, they'd meet, they'd demonstrate inconsistent understanding. B, they'd consistently and independently demonstrate understanding. And then A, it would be a consistent and independent demonstration of thorough understanding. And so how we would do this is completely different than how we've graded before. I know we'll have families and perhaps some of you ask us why we just didn't say either do it the way we've done before or move forward with a pass no pass. And we're, we're not, our system is completely different. We're not in the same system to compare or have our teachers assess and the type of learning, delivering it through distance learning. It's, it's not possible to just simply plow forward with what we had before. A through F percentages of what students were doing and then offer a pass no pass. So we would, students would be issued holistic scores for each one of those categories. A nine for an A, eight for a B, seven for a C, a six for a pass, and then a five for no pass. And essentially, students and families would be able to look in skyward and see where they're progressing against those scores. Moving forward, then teachers would, would still structure their learning the way they have. They would say this is, the, this is, these are the essential learning and what we're looking for and the skills we're looking for. And then they would scaffold up for students. So students who are, you know, looking at a C, they would need to demonstrate it in this way. Students who are looking at a B would need to demonstrate it in this way. And students looking at an A would, would do a lot of the further learning independently. Make sure I have it all. What we would have them do then is indicate by Friday, May 1st through a forum, a Google forum in the office, whether they're opting into the A, B, C, pass, no pass. Students who would opt in and have time before May 1st, at any time during the rest of the school year, if a student who chose A, B, C, pass or no pass, had something happen, whether COVID-19 or really, you know, took on too much, they would be able to drop and choose option one and opt into option one, the pass no pass. But we wouldn't have a back and forth then. So once a student again opted to pass no pass, they would stay there for the remainder. We would still not have grades be factored into GPA and class rank. Which I know some people ask, then why would we even have a letter grade? And there was no way for us to get around the systemic inequities that it would create by allowing some students to choose into a grading system that allowed them to have their grades factored into a GPA and class rank and other students who, who couldn't. It's not that they're choosing lesser, they ultimately have life happening to them and they can't opt in to the letter grade and, and need to choose a pass no pass. So the benefit for a student would be they would still have a letter grade on their transcript. And it might help them more in terms of the story that they're telling at post-secondary schools. We, as we grappled with this, we, we feel like this still aligns to the research that we did, the equity decision-making protocol that we did. But we can do everything that we could do with helping students who, you know, chose an A, B, or C on this in the pass no pass system. And so our, our ultimate recommendation is pass no pass. Again, the focus on, is on learning and feedback for both of these options. And we're working with our teachers, they work in collaborative teams. And so they started working on thinking about what are those essential learnings? How are they going to give authentic feedback? How are they going to formatively, formatively assess that? If we went with the dual option, we would continue to have them work as teams and then think about that layering aspect for students who may be working towards a letter grade. We would give them some additional time, knowing that, that when we did the original change, it fell nicely where they had some time in their collaborative teams through a professional development day. So we would work with them to get more time so that they can collaborate together and, and create more of those tiered learning system and then continue to provide feedback or excuse me, professional development as we receive feedback from our teachers on what they need support with as we navigate distance learning. That would happen regardless of, of where we land in terms of the grading scale. And it's something that we've been consistently working on as a six, 12 team. So I have my team here ready to answer any questions and I, we're open for questions or clarification, anything that we can provide.
Thank you, Dr. Gillespie, for your presentation. I will, I have a couple of questions. You had said that you had spoke to other school districts in the area and the universities. Do you have a list of which ones you spoke to?
Yep, we do have a list of the schools that we talked to. And I don't have it right here, but we definitely could provide it to you. But we talked to a wide array of schools, U of M, St. Thomas, all of the schools that are around the top 10 or 15 that our White Bear Lake students go through. Additionally, we talked to colleagues in South Washington, Ian and Don, chime in, Roseville, Madam Edi, someone shared an email with us, I didn't talk to someone specifically. Reached out to Katie Pecal at the University of Minnesota. She does a lot of work with principals and combines a lot of data. She had a, a sheet that had what every single district was doing and there was probably 20 districts on there. Did our own research on Harvard and MIT and looked at California. So a wide array of national schools, local schools, you know, community colleges, colleges, state schools.
So can you tell me what Roseville schools or Mounds View schools, are they moving to this, the pass no pass? Or what are they doing?
So Roseville is moving to pass no pass. Their difference is there on trimesters. So they had a try to end, right? Their spring break, I believe, was the same time as ours. But they have had a try to end, so they issued letter grades for that try two because that's, that, that was where it was structured. And then they're moving to a pass no pass for try three. Families who want a petition for a letter grade can do so in try three.
Okay.
And when I, the Mounds View, I don't know if Ant or Don, they were still grappling with exactly what they were going to do. But I, I'm not exactly remembering. I remember what the forms look like, but I can't remember the details of it.
So the last conversation, this is Don Bosch, last conversation I had with Mounds Views, this is what Dr. Gillespie had talked about, they were still having discussions as far as what grading system model that they were going to go with. I also had a conversation with the principal from the Nellie Henepin School District today. And they're also in the process of deciding what grading system they want to move forward with. So they're still in conversations.
We received information from North St. Paul as well on what they were doing. Most of them acknowledging this is what they're doing right now and continuing to refine and navigate, excuse me, as they get further guidance.
Okay, Deb, I seen you pop up there, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if, if we are, obviously every school is grappling with this. So if a lot of the other schools haven't made the decision yet, what's the rush to make this decision before we've gotten the extra information from the colleges, universities, direction from the governor on whether we open up in May or not? Because what happens if, you know, I, I, what happens if we do open up? Really, really hope we do, if that circumstance comes around. Then what happens to our grading platform? We've already switched to a pass no pass, but then it opens up. What, what happens in that circumstance? Why do we need to make the decision right now before we have those answers?
I can give you my take on that, but anyone else can chime in too. Our learning has changed drastically already. It's not the same as it was, it's completely different. And so we need a, a way to assess students that aligns with that current system. If we were blessed to come back, we all want that. We would have to, we would come back together as a team and, and figure out what we would do. But we couldn't go back to just the way it was. We've been on a school now six or seven weeks. It's really hard to keep track of time right now for all of us, I know. So we would have to, we would do exactly what we've been doing, come back together, consider everything. But we, the school year has been impacted too much. We can't just say, you know, back to what we were doing before, so.
But couldn't we all, couldn't we also be in the same situation come fall? Because we have no idea if we're going to see another spike over the summer. Or maybe we see another spike in the fall with flu and we're going to end up being in the same situation. Are, are we going to continue to go back and forth between grading and pass no pass? Given that this might be our, our reality for the next year?
Our intention would be that what we decide right now is what we'd move forward with until we can come back together face to face. And then once we are able to set the foundation of what we're doing right now, this is an opportunity for us to review everything we're doing as a system. And I'm excited about the opportunity as much as this is a really hard situation for us, trying to see the positive in it. So we would come, we will start thinking already in June or sooner if we're able to. What does that mean when we're able to come back face to face? And how do we transition back? What has, get feedback from students, what have they have enjoyed and what has helped them in this platform? What hasn't? And, and I already talked to someone today, a company that's really good at collecting authentic student voice, thinking about how do we make sure that we, we use this opportunity to get better for all of our students? So that's what we would do. If it's in the fall, we would do all that work over the summer and be ready with helping kids and, and teachers, welcoming them back and transitioning back to school. And if it's further than that, we would, we would do the same thing. It's so hard to predict and that's the, probably the most challenging thing for all of us is not knowing the future in a way that we haven't ever had such great uncertainty. But Ian and Don, I don't want to monopolize if you guys have anything.
No, I, I, I agree with that.
So do we think right now that we're unable to, to offer the supports the students need, period?
I don't, no, I don't think we're, we're saying we're unable to. What we're saying is we're continuing to do that, but there might, that, that, the way that COVID-19 is impacting students, you can't just say that it's about an, an outside support that they need so that they're able to work hard enough to earn the A. Like it's just, it's the reality that their experience is being impacted greatly. And have a dual system creates inequities in our system.
So if anyone else can jump in, I have a ton of questions, but so what happens if a student actually gets a no pass? I mean, are we actually going to give a student a, a no pass during a pandemic? Is that really a reality? And in that case, what would happen, you know, fall semester, first quarter? What would happen with that student with a no pass?
So if a student provided no evidence for learning, we would give a student a no pass. And we've already started talking about how do we create credit recovery, but in a different way? What does that look like? Teachers will be able to identify what essential learnings they didn't find. They didn't have either measurements for or what they were asking students to do. And we would align our credit recovery system around that, providing more opportunities. So right now, when we say credit recovery, our students can choose to utilize the ALC during the school year and/or summer school. And we would creatively look as a system on what other ways we can provide recovery of those credits in a way that students are able to be successful when they return back to school.
Sorry.
Sorry, go ahead, Don.
So I would just add, our teachers have been doing a fabulous job, in my opinion, as far as engaging students to make sure they're staying engaged. So it is our intent that we would hope that we would not offer any no passes to any of our students because through our teachers engaging with students and also through administration counselors, our, our, our support staff all around. our, our support staff all around, we're, we're working extremely hard to make sure that our students do stay engaged during this time of distance learning.
Well, I want to actually applaud the, the teachers, just from personally watching both of my boys during this period of time. I, I actually haven't seen a whole lot of difference in what either one of them has been doing. So I know that their teachers have put a lot of thought and effort into the virtual lessons that they're doing. And that's both at the middle school level and the high school level. I, I do wonder about for the, the AP classes because we have AP testing starting, I believe it's May 11th. So these students that have been in a, a year-long AP class basically have had probably about 90, 95% of their schooling done by this time. Because now, majority of these classes are in review mode to, to prepare for the AP test in, in May, which looks different from other classes because those classes don't have a big test that you have to take at the end and, and, and you're not reviewing for, for weeks on end for that test. So that's, that to me is a concern. Because if the work is done, I mean, you know, most of it is done at this point. And the, the other part of that is the AP testing is going to be completely different this year. They're going to, there's no multiple choice. It's all open-ended. And they're all doing it, it virtually. So a lot of these kids have, have never taken a test in that way. So who knows how much harder that test style is going to be for some of these students. So on top of not getting any kind of weighted credit, they may have a more difficult time scoring well enough on that test to even get the college credit. But then if you have the college and the schools kids, they get the credit anyway because it's a different kind of system. So there isn't anything to do about that. But that creates sort of an inequity also between those two things.
I've got a question about the college and the schools, just to jump in. If I can interrupt here, this is Marge speaking. Is that okay?
Marge, why don't we let, Marge, why don't we let Deb get her question answered? And then I'll let you jump in there.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Deb.
I, I can jump in. I don't know if you can hear me okay. But I would say just because the AP test occurs and a lot of content has been delivered, it doesn't mean the class stops after they take the AP test, even if we were in the building. And so, you know, there's still a lot of learning that takes place after the AP testing period is done. And so they'll be able to continue to do that through this distance learning plan. I can speak to the format of the AP testing while that it has changed. They actually did try to accommodate students. Most AP tests did have a writing component to it. And so by taking the multiple choice part off, the writing component was something that they would already have to be doing as part of that. So that would be something that they would have been practicing within their courses.
Does look like it's less time though. I think it's, question one is 25 minutes and question two is 10 minutes or something as I looked through it. So it is kind of a, it is a different format. Some kids are better at the writing portion. Some kids are better at the, the multiple tours, choice portion. But it, it doesn't offer the, the opportunity to, to offset either of those things. But I guess that's neither here nor there. But it, it does create a situation where, you know, the kids have done, done the class. They've, but they won't get the, the weighted GPA. And potentially, it could be a more difficult, they could have a more difficult time passing those tests. And that concerned me.
I would just say that when we left school, we were six weeks into the semester. And so progressing forward, they, they, they at the time were not complete with 95% of the course. And, and they received their first semester weighted grade for, for the work that they did up until that point. And so it still goes back to the same, you know, it is, it is a very difficult decision. And there, you know, the AP test changing, there's all these variables. But students who aren't in that class to not be able to progress in their GPA, again, creates that systemic inequity.
So if you guys don't mind, let's let Dr. Newmaster ask her question, Deb. And then we'll come back to you if you have additional questions. Dr. Newmaster?
Hi, thanks. Let's see, I think I've got my mic on. Okay. Um, last week, when I asked a question or two, I was thinking specifically about the college and the schools kids. And the classes they're taking, some of them were online. The people that were taking that college and the course class, whether it was at Century or at the UM or whatever Minskew class it was through, um, still are completing the class as, as if it were meeting, which it's not anymore. And so my concern was that we need to be in sync. And I looked at something that Ms. Dietrich sent out. And then I talked to someone that I know that works at Minskew. And it's the student's choice, not the instructor's choice, that they switch. And there's a form they have to do and they've extended the length of time. So instead of deciding it earlier, just like you could in college anytime, you could take a pass, no pass. And your dual system is very similar to what it was at the U when in total fear, I took an advanced statistics course, pass no pass, my very first one ever. And I was thrilled to do it. So I think all of us have done that. And if we are in sync with the requirements and the students make that decision, it's theirs to make, whether they go, you know, a grading system or pass no pass. But if you're in the Minskew system, it's the same thing. It's, you have to earn an A, B, or a C to get a pass. It's just, it doesn't do anything to, it doesn't work into any addition, which I didn't think was important. What I thought was important was that the students, especially the kids that we had recruited from a very diverse pool now. We've done a good job of recruiting a mix of kids into our college and the schools classes. And I was hopeful they would have the chance to finish and get a credit possibly. That was the important part. I was never hung up on the grade. But that was the thing I was looking at. And since it very specifically says that the student makes that decision and they recommend that they speak with their counselor, but they have that decision. And if you were at Century, you would probably finish your class because you paid for it. So that's just one thing to consider.
And that was. Let me provide some clarification. We have considered that. So students who are enrolled in CIS and concurrent enrollment classes do get the choice through the university. University is working with students who have paid for their credits, who are older than our students, who, you know, have, have developed. I know they're still developing and, you know, their, their brains develop well into their twenties, but they've developed a higher and different type of skillset to be able to truly make that decision based on their own circumstance and not all the other things I talked about around the social pressures and things like that. Additionally, so let's say a student, we went to a universal pass. A student, or pass no pass, a student would still be able to opt in at the university level and on their college transcript would have that letter grade. So they would still have that. They can transfer, they could, if they go to the U, that would be the grade that you would see. They can submit that when they apply to, to universities. Their White Bear Lake transcript would have the pass. And, and that procedure of them submitting their college transcript is no different than it's been in the past. So they would still get credit for that CIS class. It's just to compare the choice at the university level and the skillset and the circumstance of students paying for college and being enrolled in that. And then our K-12 system that has a, a wide array of experiences, ninth grade students to 12th grade students, all of those things. It's just, it's super difficult. And, and it's not the same, given the choice at the high school level.
I do understand that all kids are unique. And I have a daughter of a good friend that I will not mention her name, but she started North Campus at 12. She took an extra year out after graduating early and still had two years of college. So you just don't know. Kids are one end to the other. And I just didn't want, especially the kids we'd recruited, to be left without that. Because the importance of a credit, when maybe nobody in your family has ever received a college credit before, is huge. So I just wondered, are we watching for those kids? Thanks.
I know Ms. Carol has a question. Maddie?
Yeah, sorry, I have a couple from myself and also from like students that students have had. So firstly, with the dual plan about how it was based on, like your learn, like how much of it you've been learning, not, it's like a new, it's still the A, B, C, but it's not based on like your points and stuff like that, I guess. Um, my concern is that the stress of the new grading system and the inconsistency that could possibly occur between teachers, um, each teacher differing in what they think reaching that said learning target means, because like a lot of extra stress on students. Um, considering like, we're already under stress now, just worrying about pass fail. Um, and then adding a brand-new grading system that nobody's been exposed to before with so little time left in the school year for trial and error and figuring out if such a system is good for students on, and then taking away the motivation of it boosting your GPA. Um, I'm just wondering if it's going to be like, good for students or if students are even going to want to do that? Because it's not this, and it's not the grading system that we know and are like reaching towards. It's new in a sense. Um, I'm just worrying about like how that changed with so little time for, like if you don't do so well and then you want to try to fix that. But we have like a month and a half left of school. And I mean, it just doesn't leave a lot of wiggle room for students to make sure that it's the right fit for them. And would then classes still be weighted? Or would it take away the weighted aspect of it completely? You wouldn't get your AP weighted grade even if you achieved the A in the class?
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't factor any of those grades into GPA or class rank.
Okay. All right. Um, and then how do we keep the grading scale consistent between teachers? Because I have a lot of, like, I take mostly AP classes. And even already, there's like slight differences, even though they try to keep it the same across departments, in a sense. But what about when this grading sales changes and it's based on like the teacher's view of what the student has achieved? And not a set, you got this many, right? How do we keep that consistency that students aren't worried about? If they're portraying that they've achieved enough to get that certain letter?
I can keep answering, but I feel like I want my other friends to not feel like it's the Alison show. But I can tell you what, what I would say. But you guys, it's so weird. We're not in the same room together. So does someone want to jump in or you want me to continue?
Go ahead, Dr. Gillespie.
All right. So, so what I would say, Maddie, is it definitely, I can understand that, that it would feel different to students. It's actually not a different skill that teachers are using. They use rubrics now. They communicate in, in, you know, all the time around assessment. And it really is about the evidence that they would find. So it's not about, I feel like Maddie has done this. It's how can I look at what Maddie has given me through this learning platform that shows, let's say you're, you're working for an A, that you can independently, consistently, and thoroughly apply the skills in, you know, whatever class you may be looking at. And so it, it's new for you in terms of you're, you're accustomed to thinking about it as a point system. And it, you know, but it's not a different skill that we're asking our teachers to develop. They do that consistently and frequently in their teams. So that's what I would say to students. And teachers are professionals and travel with those conversations all the time around. How was this student demonstrating to me that they've met this learning? Because they too care about integrity in their scoring. And, and you know, there are some little nuances. And our system right now is, is not as aligned as we hope it to be, the one that you're used to. But in this system, that they would apply skills they use with that rubric.
I would say, I would just add to that is, the other thing that we can, took into consideration when we looked at our, the other, the option two for the letter grades was, in our traditional format with our, with our, with our staff, they've developed some of the assessments based on not a distance learning model, but our traditional model that we've had in place up to this distance learning. So to ask them to try to, to come up with a different assessment during distance learning was one of the reasons we went into looking at the letter grade option to be a little differently than what it's been in the past, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and just to kind of piggyback off of that is, any, you know, in the traditional grading model, students would have opportunities to show relearning or to redo things and to, to show that they can learn and, or do things in a different way. But under this new system, there wouldn't be like going back in time, if you will. It would just be feedback and here's what you can do to improve as you move forward on the next assignment, as opposed to that kind of point collecting that you referenced where in the traditional model, you would say, what can I do to get X number of points back? Now, it will still focus on the learning. It'll say like, here's what you did great and here's what you can improve upon. And then the next assignment is where you can apply that learning to show. So it's really still a holistic view on that A, B, C rubric.
I would also just add to, to what I said earlier is we're also taking into account as much as we are with our students and all the trauma that they're going through with COVID-19. We also, we also have to consider our staff as well. We have a lot of staff that are going through a lot of anxiety and stress as well. And so that was taken into consideration as we started to look at an option two for grading.
All right. Other questions, comments?
I do.
Yeah, she can go. I will.
Oh, sorry, Maddie. Go ahead, Maddie.
No, no, no. You've had questions just as long as I have. I will, I still have some stuff to get down on my paper. So go ahead.
Well, um, I appreciate the, the conversation about college and the schools and AP courses. But I want to reflect back on Dr. Gillespie's presentation and the students we're not talking about right now. Um, and what really stood out to me is the word harm. We don't want to do harm to any of our kids. And I appreciate the complexity of AP and weighted grades and GPA and CIS. But we've got a lot of kids in the school district. And we need to think about the kids that we're not discussing right now, the kids who might be harmed by two different grading systems. And, you know, last week, we asked district leadership to consider these two possibilities and to take into account student voice and equity and ask them to be flexible and reflect. And, and in the last week, as we've also heard from teachers and students and parents and residents, it became clear to me that I needed to be flexible and reflect. And leadership really means considering all the available information. And Dr. Gillespie talked to that. And make difficult decisions to the best of our ability. And I think in a school district, it really means looking outside of our own situations and considering perspectives that we never knew existed. And for me, it meant understanding that while I don't have firsthand knowledge of these perspectives, our teachers do. And our teachers encounter students with a great variety of lived experiences. And they, and our very capable secondary leadership are telling us that the most equitable option is to go pass no pass. And it's clear, all of our students are struggling in some way. But our teachers have the broadest understanding of the character of these difficult situations. And our leadership has done the research to, to back up the equity of this decision. And so there's no playbook for our current situation and none of this has been easy. And I'm glad that students have spoken up because we want to hear from you. And I'm glad that teachers have spoken up because we want to hear from you. And I spent much of this last week reading and thinking and agonizing about this situation. And it is abundantly clear to me that our teachers and staff and leadership care deeply about each student. And I trust them in supporting this course of action. Because they understand the spectrum of perspectives and we want to do no harm. So I just wanted to express my gratitude for your continued reflection and research and say that pass no pass feels like the most equitable course of action for all our kids.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Alison. Is there any other questions, comments, concerns?
I think, I think Maddie had a few more questions.
Maddie?
So we kind of talked about, we, like you guys have said that you've talked with the Minnesota's colleges and stuff like that. But what about the colleges out, out of state? Because I know. out out of state because I know personally I didn't apply to a single Minnesota school most of my friends are going out of Wisconsin all the way to the east or the west coast. So what about those students who we have not confirmed yet on whether the colleges will accept a pass no pass on their transcripts? And how will this impact the possibility of scholarship money um on acceptance because all of our White Bear students are still gonna be compared to every other student in the country applying to these schools so how do we know that our students won't be at a disadvantage for not having that piece on their transcripts that colleges really consider? Um we know if colleges across the nation are like seriously considering this or is this just been like you know a discussion but nobody's really come out and said we're pretty sure colleges aren't gonna take it into consideration what is? I don't know.
No, I think that's a great question Maddie um I I can't speak for every college across the country. Um I don't have a comprehensive list of that but I do know in the research that we've done um from colleges outside the Midwest I can I can speak to um UC Berkeley I can speak to Stanford I can speak to Harvard um Dartmouth um MIT they've actually all gone to a pass no pass or or they consider a pass fail you can um title it however you want for the for their spring semester. The the colleges and universities that have given the option like University of Minnesota or Minnesota and others have also expressed that they will they know that the spring of twenty twenty throughout this country and across um this co- or this world is a much different place than we've ever been. And so they're gonna take all of that into consideration they they know that schools are grappling with what we're grappling with as far as grading and so all of that will be used into consideration as far as college admissions in regards to scholarship people oh go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead and just done.
No.
Just just to kind of add to that I I personally called quite a few of those schools and they just wanted to make it clear to us that this isn't just talking about the senior class or the junior class but it's talking about you know students who are in ninth grade currently um that yeah like Mr. Bosch said uh the spring of twenty twenty will not be forgotten anytime soon and as students began to apply to colleges and I think this is kind of what you're gonna get to next Mr. Bosch around scholarships is it's really about telling your story and um how you you know you could talk about how we came together as a White Bear like community to support one another to really kind of disarm systemic inequities to make sure that all of our students um were able to learn and move forward um and really talking through what your own personal experience was during this COVID nineteen situation and will go a long way not only with college admissions but also with scholarships.
Well, and I um have had sorry Don I've had conversations with other schools a- across the country looking at um really Harvard MIT Stanford they were the leaders and and coming out and saying we will make sure that this what K twelve does in terms of grades doesn't impact students enrolling and um really looking at the comprehensive experience of students and colleges have been having that conversation for a long time with us um prior to this in K twelve and what skills are our students in students developing how do they tell the whole story and GPA sure is a part of it but it's absolutely not the whole story and so I will partner and you all know me I'm not leaving White Bear anytime soon with any family that is having a hard time in really showing our you know what this what our decisions were and how proud we are of those decisions but also that um your story as a student and how this impacted you far outweighs um GPA points and um you know people continually come out the U of M and our Minnesota schools are still talking about it um you know California has some really large school districts some of them are completely going to pass no pass so this isn't a Minnesota problem. It's a a com- comprehensive country problem and that will help all of us think differently around how do we support students with scholarships and entry into post-secondary and it's an opportunity that I would love um and will continue partnering with post-secondary and our families as they navigate the next years enrolling in school. Go ahead, Mr. Bosch.
I would just echo you I was just gonna say all the conversations I've had with universities and college admissions counselors is they're looking for that holistic student. Um and they're really looking beyond just grade point average they're actually looking at the courses that students are taking to really apply themselves and to show that rigor so it's much it's much bigger than just a a grade or a grade point average.
If I could just interject uh for a moment Chairman Mullen this is Tiffany Dietrich.
Go ahead Tiffany.
Thank you um Maddie I I absolutely understand and appreciate the questions that you're asking and wanna reiterate what Allison and Don and Ange have conveyed in terms of the importance of telling that that personal narrative and I know right now that so many of the educators that I represent are working closely with students to support them academically and also to support them um with the emotions surrounding this pandemic and with all of the things that are changing from from day to day and just as you can share your story in um the narratives that you give to colleges the educators I represent I I hope that you and and your fellow students see us as allies in sharing your story during this time because we know the disappointment that you're feeling um we know the many challenges that students across our system are facing and at the end of the day those stories and sharing those stories is gonna mean so much more to those colleges and universities than any letter grade on a transcript right now at a time when there is just no possible way to have any sort of consistency um and there really was no consistency true consistency before and so I love that we're looking at emphasizing learning in our district I love um that our district leaders have done the research and are taking the courageous step to support everyone within our community to make sure that that we are behaving in in equitable ways for everyone so I wanna encourage you and your classmates reach out to your teachers who you have such strong relationships with start to talk about those ways that you can communicate your story um with the colleges that you're applying to. Thank you.
Thank you um is there Maddie do you have any more questions?
Uh just one more um this one's kind of a little bit specific so I don't and it's if it's not really weird discussing this meeting it's totally okay I totally understand um but what does um this whole situation mean for like finals? Are we still doing finals is it gonna be based on if a teacher wants to have a final? Um are we just saying no more finals? I don't know I just students have been curious on whether they're gonna have to take finals in June so I thought I'd ask.
That's a good question actually and I think um ultimately it kind of depends on the direction we move forward with so under a pass no pass system there wouldn't be traditional finals because you're just working towards progress in your essential learning right and so that wouldn't need to be a final. Uh it might look a little different if we end up um landing on option two where a student might opt into it A that might look a little different so it really kind of does depend on where we land tonight but ultimately um for the pass no pass system there would not be traditional finals no.
I would just add what I said earlier I think if 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 there was I haven't had any discussion with my staff yet in regards to finals um but we would really have to look at those much differently than we have in the past just based on this current distance learning plan that we're in right now they 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 could not it would be fair to our students for them to be the same as they were in the past.
Okay, thank you my and Maddie do you have any other questions?
Uh no I just wanted to say thank you for letting me ask questions um I know I don't represent like as much as I like represent to you guys the student body I am still a senior and there's like final semester you know I can't for all the seniors and all the underclassmen I really wanna thank you guys for considering like all the students because I know I can't speak for everybody so it's good that there's people also advocating for those as well.
I just wanna say thank Maddie I know how hard it is to to talk in these meetings and especially around grading which is um an emotional topic so we appreciate you asking questions and your leadership always.
And I have one more thing if I can say it.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead Dr. Newmaster.
Okay, I wanna say thank you again for all the work that's been done and I'm still not clear whether we've gone all one way except that people in college in the schools will have the chance to finish in a way that reflects their options still to get a grade and the AP classes can still take their uh final for AP but they've always been able to get both high school credit as well as potential college credit I didn't get into any of the details you've talked about about class rank and GPAs and I was just thinking about the potential money saving college credit efforts that people had been putting in and that's one thing that White Bear has always supported. What I am glad about especially is as we look at this through the equity lens all of a sudden a lot of us who are comfortable have realized what a lot of our kids silently have dealt with for years. So I think it makes everybody a little more sensitive to what it's like to be on the edge and that's good for us in our comfort. So I thank you for dealing with some really difficult things and it's still not gonna be easy for a long time probably but we're trying and we're a good community and it looks to me like you're covering a lot of the problems. Some of the sadness I don't know how we take care of it because things are different but thanks for your hard work.
Thank you Dr. Newmaster. I know Ms. Thompson of you did you have a question?
Uh yes I just a a couple maybe points that could lead into some further discussion that could be provided for those that are listening um as far as the AP testing from what I've seen in my research that I have done on that uh not only have they um tailored down the test timeline but it appears as if you know they had an a a statement on their website that says um it spoke specifically to students and understanding that some students have lost more class time than other students have is one of the reasons for tailoring the way that they're doing testing this year. Um and you know pretty much being very very confident they've I mean they have a list of all the colleges and universities how those colleges and universities are going to take the new AP testing and what their minimum or maximum requirements are for the scoring and I found it seemed to me that a majority of the schools are are gonna be accepting a three they're gonna go with a one to five grade system three being one that seemed to be you know Harvard and some of those other institutes that are up there a little more uh uh are still gonna go with the five scoring system which should be to be expected but seem like most of the universities and colleges are gonna go more in that mid-range um. And then taking into consideration too that um they wouldn't release their scoring until July but within forty-eight hours of the testing they will give the responses of the students that would be in our district to the teachers within that forty-eight hour timeframe allowing the teacher to then decide what they would use uh that knowledge however they want to determine it right whether it be a course grade or they use it as their final exam grade or however they they would use that. Um but just knowing that they're and not only that but they are also doing an open book and open note testing system this year which to me says that they very much understand what kind of a um situation we are all in and that so to me that test this year is totally different than any other year it's ever been given they've already taken that into consideration they have tailored their test so it isn't going to be the same test that our students took last year or the year before it probably is may who knows what's gonna happen next year with the testing um. And then if you go into what the college and schools program is doing they're kind of leaving it more of an option for the student to choose whether they would like to continue with the graded scoring for their class or whether they would like to go to the pass no pass system but also noting um like it is a lot of the teachers that have sent us communications even you know some language arts teachers that teach honors courses saying that they have all of our teachers have already tailored their classes down to about a fifty to sixty more so the fifty percent normal classwork that has happened in the past so so a grading system is is no longer the same as it was prior to this happening. So by giving that grade you aren't you aren't giving the same grade A right now as you gave prior to our spring break it is it isn't the same and it isn't going to be the same um and and that is across the board for all the districts that I have looked into research they all seem to be doing that um. I I would note Roseville did go to the pass no pass system but it says on their um they did reiterate on their thing that they are doing the the pass no mark they call it pass no mark uh system because they they chose the no mark saying that no student would actually fail out of this year's system they will work with them they will figure out a way to provide them um with the opportunity to get the work done um but they did note that it was available in accentuating circumstances uh such as if it was very specific that that college that student is going to says nope we are not going to accept that pass no mark system we want the GPA and your GPA has to meet this requirement to get into our school um that they would work possibly with that student or those students who need that um to figure out a way to to still allow them to work towards that weighted grade and it went on to kind of talk a little bit about scholarships specifically they noted and I noticed Mounds View had some information on their site to saying that if if a student is like somebody who is gonna be an NCAA eligibility a- and they need to have certain requirements that that school would work with them but um to me like reviewing everything that I have reviewed and doing as much research as I possibly could and reading through all of the emails that everyone has provided um and I'm happy that Maddie spoke Maddie we appreciate you your voice I'm so happy that you spoke because I was hoping that you would um because your voice is important just as important as anybody else's voice here if not more important because you are our students. You guys are the reasons why we all do what we do because we want you to have the best experience you can and you know the situation has really it sucks it really does that's just the only nice word I can think of to say is is we all wish we weren't here but this is um where we are and then I would just end with in our strategic plan that we've been working on for a long time one that I find pretty important is that communities with shared goals have unlimited potential so to me one thing that I really have wanted to work towards is is community uh building up a community again and we're not always gonna make everybody happy it's 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 the it's just is never gonna happen that's just the way it is but I think if we all can understand that this time is different for all of us including our teachers our students our families everybody involved we should be uh ensuring that we are not leaving anybody behind and that we aren't harming any other student by um by providing a system that will leave others behind or will affect the way that they are that they are ranked in the system overall um. And then you know our our equity commitment and people talking about that we can't just talk about it and not actually do what we've said we are going to do and you know it is it is not um going to be easy always to do those things but those are the things that we have committed to in our district and I think we've worked really hard with everybody in our community um to to get to those goals and this is our way to say this is what we felt and we worked towards and now we are going to do our best to follow through with and you know just and I love the the saying disrupting the ine- the systematic inequities because that's that's what we have to do in order to make changes that people are talking about all over the country um and how our education is done how we grade how we test how we do everything that we do and and um and we can learn and then you know with Deb mentioning of what will we do in the fall? I think right now we need to worry about what we need to do right now in this last month and a couple weeks that we have and then you know we can't really decide that because what's going to happen but we can start here and then build on it. you know, we can't really decide that because of what's going to happen. But we can start here and then build on it um in the future if we have to.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak or uh Dr. Gillespie, did you have any answers or? I didn't, I thought they both made great comments, but I want to make sure to give you an opportunity to answer either one of them.
No, I, I, oh, go ahead, Don.
I was just going to say with Angelo, with in your, in your response to the NCAA, the NCAA has just come out with some, some communication around our student athletes. And they understand that school districts are grappling with this grading for the spring semester. And, and the information they just came out with is for schools that are going to a pass, no pass model, they would consider a pass to meet the, the um eligibility core course requirements for student athletes.
I just want to reiterate my gratitude to really all of you and our community. Um, I, I, I know White Bear League to be a, a, a community that is always together. We, like Angela said, we're not always going to agree, but we are modeling for our students what passionate dialogue can be, but still being respectful of opposing views and, and that matters most to me as a, as an educator and why I went into education. And so I appreciate, I have had conversations with families um that their kids are seniors now and they were my first sophomore class and um you know, people who haven't all agreed with the decisions we've made, but they have pushed my thinking and I think our relationships have been strengthened by that. And I just want to reiterate to the students that I know I'm speaking for our whole team in that we want to come alongside you. And if and when a difficulty is encountered because of this current situation, um, we want to help you navigate that and, and colleges are our partners and we do get to talk to people. So just know that. But I just want to say thanks. I appreciate it's been super hard work, but it's the right kind of work for all of our students.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chapman.
Yeah, I uh, I just want to um offer another thought that I'm not sure we have had spoken about previously. And that is if we were to, I mean, I'm very strongly in favor of uh, uh, and across the board, no pass, uh, pass, no pass. Um, for the reasons that I cited last week, students being under stress and much of what Board Member Ellison and Board Member Thompson have said. Um, one of the things though that I, I wonder about is students that are doing very well currently. Um, what if they were to elect a no, or excuse me, a grading option? And then they were to get COVID-19 and it takes them down. Um. We have heard time and time again from the governor, uh, from where I work and at Fairview uh, that this thing is not, this surge is not going to peak out probably until late June now, perhaps even July. Uh, there's a lot in the next month and a half or, or however many weeks we've got left of school where students or their family members, parents that currently are doing well in school uh could end up having themselves being taken down by COVID-19 or a family member uh taken down and create a whole new dynamic, a whole new situation within their household that they're currently not experiencing. Um, and I've heard that this stuff is nasty. It, just because uh, you know, a teenager that is healthy may not have a life-threatening situation if they get it. Uh, what I have heard is that it, it, it can take somebody down and typically does for weeks on end, perhaps a month or longer. Uh, I've heard of a number of cases of relatively healthy people that uh, it knocks them, it knocks them out with fever, um, you know, body aches and so on and so forth. So I do have to wonder if somebody were to, if we did go to any type of system where a student can elect a grade and then they get hit with COVID-19. Uh, you know, the concern about GPA may go out the window because their GPA may tank at that point. Uh, and I think that that's something that, that, you know, students and their parents need to take into consideration. Uh, you know, with the stay-at-home order that we have, um, it's not to necessarily um stop the spread of the virus. And I think that's what gets lost a lot. It is meant to slow down the virus so it doesn't overwhelm our healthcare system right now, the ICU units in particular. Um, the fact of the matter is, from what I understand, is that we all are going to be at one point or another exposed to this thing. Whether or not there's a vaccine in place at the time that some of us are exposed, you know, hopefully there will be. But uh, this, uh, the stay-at-home orders, these orders are just basically to slow the spread, not to stop it. You can't stop this thing. It's, it's spread out too far, gone way, way out of uh reach as far as being able to stop it. So that's my two cents. Um, so I think that, you know, those that are advocating for a grading option, the students and parents, I think they, you know, if they haven't taken that into consideration, really need to think long and hard about what uh, if they were to contract COVID-19, what that could do to their GPA. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Ange, did you want to, you have a comment?
Yeah, well, just to, to reiterate that if a student, if we ended up moving to option two um, and something did happen to a student, that they would be able to elect back into the pass, no pass option. Uh, and once they're there though, then that would just have to be the option that they choose. So they wouldn't be able to go back and forth. But we do recognize that it's really hard to make all decisions. And so we would still not want to harm any students if something were to happen to them or their family.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be heard.
Don, I'd like to bring up one more thing.
Okay, yep, Ms. Boyd.
So, so I just, I wanted to thank um Don and Ange and Allison for, for all the work that you guys did on this. And I know that you worked extremely hard to, to put everything together in a not-so-easy situation. Um, the only thing that I'd like to, to address is just the, the manner in which we've rolled this out. Um, I, I'd like to make sure that, that next time that, that we make um, such a big decision like this, that everybody is aware of the decision. We've all discussed it, hashed it out, um, before that it is rolled out um to parents and students so that uh we can all be on the same page. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. Is there anybody else that would like to comment? Ms. Thompson, did you want to, you have something else to say?
Uh, yeah, I would, I had something to add. And then uh, uh, Ms. Lloyd made a good point there as well. Um. One more quick thing coming off of kind of what um Mr. Chapman had said is one of the things I noticed in some of the other districts that were allowing the grading, uh, the option between the two, actually one school district is, is giving three options. And I have a nephew that goes to that school and he is um extremely stressed out by the pressure that he has been put under to now decide which of the three options he feels will work the best for him. Um, and he kind of wishes that they didn't have so many choices. He also said that they were, and I noticed this in a couple of other districts, they're giving the students the option to choose between the program or the grading choices, but then they're also giving them until um you know, some of them, it depends on the timeline, but into late May to decide, say they choose the grading system and it just doesn't go the way that they had expected it to go. Then at that point, they are allowed to back out of that grading system and go to the pass, no pass system, which to me says that uh they haven't considered, or they have sort of considered the stress and the pressure that the students are under, but they're kind of giving them an out if, if the grading system isn't working well for them, which to me says uh, the grading system might not be the best option in this circumstance, um, at least from what I have heard. And then one last quick point on the AP testing that I forgot to mention before was that uh, also it had mentioned that all the uh information that will be on these tests in May will all be done from everything that was covered by early March. They have everything after like the first week in March has been taken off of the test. And you can go into their website at the College Board AP Testing, um. And you can click on what your specific tests are that you would be taking. And it gives you all the information that'll be on the test. It, it tells you what's going to be covered and what sections aren't going to be covered. And every test I went into is not covering the last two to three sections of the course. So you know, they're already saying, we're not testing anything after the first week or so of March because because they already know that kids aren't learning it the same way they would have learned it before. So I, I just wanted to add that last bit in there. And and again, really thank everybody for all your work you have done because I really think the community should know that you have gone above and beyond. Um, I would also a little bit reiterate on what Deb said in that um, as a member of the school board and a member of our community, um, I would hope that the next time a decision of this nature uh comes to our district, that we as school board members are given all the information prior to this decision being rolled out to our, to our district community members so that um so that we can avoid this uh, this situation in, in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Can I ask one final clarification question?
Sure, Dr. Newmaster.
No comment. I've listened to everything and I've got notes. And I understand uh whatever you want to call the pass, no pass, I'm not sure what the term is for our district, but you also presented quite clearly the dual system. Is there, and then you talked about how college and the schools could still take their test. Um, and AP, so there's that that's been taken care of. So is there still a dual system or are you still deciding? It felt like it was presented last week as a done thing. Now it looks like you've looked at options. I just want to know clearly in my head, are you still thinking of options? Or is there a decision that you'll make later and tell us about?
That's it.
Doc, Dr. Kazmercheck, are you on here? You want to answer that? Or Dr. Gillespie?
Yeah, um, Dr. Gillespie, you can, you can jump in as well. But the plan is that we would move ahead with the pass, no pass model moving forward. That, that's what the recommendation is. Um, and so we would plan to move ahead with that.
When we examined the dual option, um, Board Member Newmaster, we were honoring that some of the questions that you as a board had and also the feedback that we had from students and families requesting that we examine that option. So that we did examine it and ultimately came up with a recommendation that we uh, want to continue with our original recommendation of universal pass, no pass.
I know this is a holding situation, um, but I think that it's important that we just, we move forward, be decisive with pass, no pass as recommended.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, uh, see none. Uh, Dr. Kazmercheck, do you want to add anything final? Are you okay? And if you are, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, we're good. As I just stated, we're going to move ahead with the pass, no pass. Um, I don't know if there's any other, as you asked, if there's any other board members who want to ask any other questions or offer any more opinion, but that, that'll be the plan moving forward. So with that, I, I guess the ball's in the court. Chair Mullen.
All right. I will, Ms. Ellison, did you have, are you making the motion or did you have a question?
No, I'm just ready to take the uh roll call for our motion to adjourn since everything has to be a roll call.
Yep. So there, is there a motion?
Chair Mullen, I motion that we adjourn.
We've got a motion from Dr. Arcan. Is there, I'm assuming Ms. Thompson, you're going to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. This will require a roll call vote. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Arcan?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Allison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your time and I appreciate everything you do for the district.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, all of you.